Prior to this, we had an executive session to discuss personal education. Everybody please rise for the pledge.
Folks, we gotta make our announcement here before we do that. We can rise for the pledge, but I just want to remind everybody, this is our day for our traditions around here. We have five students from the high school in the back, and we have three students from Central, William Penn, and Mount Vernon. Did I get it right? Awesome, I remember. Uh, we have the kids just come up here and be a part of our board meetings. Uh, make this one of those things that's a little bit more exciting. And for doing that, we give them a T-shirt, a free T-shirt. Thank you. And we also give them just a certificate thanking them for coming up and being a part of our board meeting. So kind of is a nice reminder for us of why we do what we do to get kids in here, our high school students at our elementary. So we gotta get some middle school kids in here, right? Maybe you'll come back when we get over, right? Okay. Who's Kennedy? Where's Kennedy? Kennedy? You wanna come up here and shake my hand and we'll get a picture taken by? Let's see Dr. Perry over there. Okay. Now who's Brooke? Well, you guys lined up in order too. Hi Brooke. Nice to meet you, I'm Mr. Conick. Got it. And you must be Reese. Come on over. Hi Reese, thanks for coming in. Awesome. Okay, are we ready? Ready to come up here with me. Flag's in the corner. And that's what, guys, you're in charge. So put your hand over your head. And go ahead and get started, everyone follow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys for coming. Oh, how about all three? Come over here somewhere. Break my eyes. Thanks. Thanks for coming in, everybody. Thank you so much for taking the time, we appreciate it. Okay, uh, sure. Thank you.
Okay, first up, Mr. Henry, can you roll call for him?
Director Rukowski. Director Rukowski.
Mr. Rukowski.
Director Cummings here. Director Otters.
Here.
Director Ferraro. Director Hammond here.
Waving to your dad.
Director Henry here. Director Sharkey.
Here.
Director Stoper.
Here.
Director Wyckoff.
Next up, voting procedure is alphabetical. Chair of the glass. First up, Mr. Conick, super duper.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey. Uh, first thing I want to thank. October is Principal Appreciation Month. I'd like to take this time to recognize the efforts of our administrators in the building levels. Uh, Mr. Ralph at the high school, Dr. Popowicz, uh, Mrs. Kelly Garlo at the high school, all principals up there. So we want to thank them for their service at the high school. Dr. Martel, Mr. Charge at the middle school, thank them for their service. Uh, Mr. Dr. Somala at William Penn, we'll go by seniority, he's got the most. Uh, Dr. Dr. Somala at William Penn, Dr. Burns at Green Oak and Mount Vernon, and Mr. Bedar at Central Elementary. Uh, really, we can't do this job without principals who are making sure that all those initiatives and crazy ideas that we come up with at the district level, they're helping to implement those things along with our teachers. So a big thank you to them and thank them for allowing us to be able to do this job. The other thing we want to talk about is our comprehensive plan, right? Dr. Dr. Perry? So do you need me to do?
We need to unplug that one. Do we have to unplug that one?
For sound?
No. No, for air plug.
Okay, uh, I'll get started and then we were lucky enough to have Mrs. LoJack, who's our Director of Digital Teaching and Learning. Uh, she's here to join us as well and just talk us, talk to us about this process.
That's your mom. I don't even know which one that's on.
Do you have it, Mrs. LoJack?
I had it, I thought I was projecting, but I think she has.
I did, yeah.
Okay, I'll just tell you a little bit about a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is something that's required by all state, all school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, what we have to do is go through, and it's a very involved process. We have had lots of stakeholder meetings. We had teachers, administrators, parents, community members. Uh, this is something that every district does differently. Uh, I'm really proud of this, this, this process that we went through, the information that we got from our teachers, uh, from a couple of our students, from our community members and business owners. Uh, some folks from the Rotary helped us out. Uh, really gave us a lot of insight as to what they thought the needs of the district were. So we appreciate that. Uh, it's on a new portal, which is very cumbersome. We are the first group to ever go through this new portal. Uh, and I just want to take an opportunity, uh, just go through the steps very quickly. It also includes five other plans that have to be part of the comprehensive plan. So the first is the comprehensive plan, which is the ready, set, go that you see up there. Along with your comprehensive plan, you also have to go through a list of other plans that have to be submitted. So academic standards and assessments, uh, that really looks at our curriculum, our standards, our assessments that we use, both, um, the NWA test, some of the things that you might be familiar with that your students use, NWA test, CDT testing and so forth. We also have to submit a gifted education plan, an induction plan for our new teachers, and also professional development plan, all based on feedback from the staff notes. So the ready, set, go, this is again, that process. The ready, uh, talks about having us go through and dig through data. So this is really, if you're gonna see some slides at the end and talk about our district and some of our pillars, one of them being data-driven decisions. The first one is going through the future, the P A Future Ready Index. P A Future Ready Index gives us all the information that we require, uh, really about how your district's going in terms of performance, growth, uh, whether or not we're meeting attendance goals, and whether we're also meeting, uh, goals related to career readiness.
That's awesome, that's a public document. So every school district, there's actually a site that the Future Ready Index site has all school districts on that site. So we're on there as well. So our 21, 22 data is on there, not our 22, 23. So we built the comprehensive plan based on 21, 22, and what we're gonna be doing for the next three years in the district. So think about, you know, this plan, it's not till eternity, it's only for three years. So, um, you know, to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Conick was saying, whenever we met with, um, the teachers and, you know, uh, community members, we talked about, you know, they, everyone gave input of things that they would like to see, uh, done differently in the district or, um, wanted information on, you know, where we're at with our, um, how we're performing academically as compared to other schools, things like that. The Future Ready Index gives that information on there and that's populated. It'll come up for the 22, 23 school year, I think it's November, they're saying it'll, it should be.
We just gotta pre, we gotta preview dates, just a few days ago. So I'll be looking at that data.
Yeah.
Uh, just some of the other information that goes into this ready, set, go, uh, talks about related academics. So we look primarily, of course, to tested subjects, which are English, math, and science. Uh, but does give you opportunity to look at all those other, uh, content areas as well. Some equity considerations, make sure that every student has the same opportunities, and then also leadership, teaching, and learning. A lot is working here by professional development, so. Anything to add? Next page. Next slide? Oh, this isn't. Uh, this is, and again, we really kind of spent a lot of time having teachers. I like this piece, one of the, one of the most powerful things that we did. Uh, we got all that information from that Future Ready Index. And had teachers sit and look at honest, very, and they were very honest and very vulnerable, took a look at the strengths and challenges that we have here in the district. Uh, we, we don't want to shy away from those things that maybe we need to work on. Uh, so we address those as part of this plan and we appreciate that. When you, when you're talking about addressing strengths and weaknesses or strengths and challenges, one of the most important things we have to do is we have to provide professional development. It's a lot. We have to, if we're gonna ask teachers to do something, we need to make sure that they have the capacity and the support to do that. So this plan actually has us go through an entire professional development plan as well. So that we are providing the supports that are aligned with our goals. And then we have to communicate that data as well. Uh, and, and that's something that's available to everybody on the Future Ready Index website, and also, uh, it'll be on our website once we get it approved and finalized at the end of October. Anything to add on that slide?
Our professional development was based on the needs that we saw based on the information coming off of that. So that includes our P V A S scores in addition to our P S S A scores and Keystone scores. So we look at that and think about professional development, what do we need to provide for our teachers? So we have other initiatives going on in the district, you know, world of work, we have technology initiatives, things like that. But when you're thinking about the comprehensive plan, you want to think about, our, our number one goal here is academics. I mean, we want students to achieve. So, um, you know, the big bulk of the plan surrounding that, those components, educationally speaking.
And professional development is getting, actually becoming more complicated as we move through year to year. There are, we are finding more and more mandated requirements for professional development through the state of Pennsylvania. So we're gonna see some of those requirements of the professional development plan. Uh, and just understand that while we're continuing to try to make sure our teachers have the capacity to support our kids and to improve academics, we also have at least two very, very big, new mandated professional development processes that we have to go through. So the next slide. Chapter sixteen is our gifted education plan. This is something that we do every year. Uh, this is just making sure that we have to answer several questions about our process of identifying students for gifted education, uh, and also talking about eligibility, uh, making sure that folks that are in that program that belong in that program. And then our services, we have to get a description of the services that we have in place. For anybody that's, uh, familiar with the gifted program, that looks very different at the elementary and the middle school level versus the high school level. So it's a very, uh, level-dependent process that we have to go through. Mr. Gettler, uh, our special education director, worked on this plan and worked with Mary Carol and I to go through that process. Our induction plan is something that we've actually changed, changed just a little bit. Uh, our induction program was always through Elizabeth Forward School District. Uh, we met with the teachers, had a very clear process for what we went through. Requirements from the state have made it so that it's much more difficult to personalize the process of induction of teachers. A lot of things that are requirements from the state, that now our AIU is really good at doing, they're able to do it asynchronously through their program. Uh, so we are sending our teachers down to them for this programming. But what we want to, what our plan is to do is have them handle all those requirements of the state, and then we are going to handle the EF things. So when we want to talk about Apple products, we're still gonna bring new teachers together and talk about Apple products. Or we're gonna talk to them about how we can use student data and how we process CDT data and NWA data. So we're gonna still talk to them about the, and what it's gonna hopefully do is give us more time to work on this Elizabeth Forward specific things, while the AIU takes care of a lot of those kind of state requirements.
So we have, um, we have days carved out at the beginning of the year before the teachers even start that any of our, our new teachers have to go through. So that's when they're learning about Canvas, PBIS, all the district set initiatives. Whereas, working with the AIU, um, uh, the induction now is being required, a two-year induction program, where we only had one, that's what the standard was before. Now it's two years. And it was all these layers now that you have to go through to ensure that new teachers are exposed and understand the new processes with the PDE and, you know, having additional professional development that, you know, we just don't have here. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that our teachers were prepared to meet the needs of all the students that were coming. So we made that decision to go with the AIU. Now, we're not the only one, there's, I mean, I don't, I don't know anyone who isn't using the AIU at this point just because of all the new developments coming from PDE. Uh, 'cause there's a lot of specialization that is required, that PD is requiring now that, you know, it's just better to have someone that has those expertise and skills so that our teachers are better prepared. So that's why.
There's still a mentoring component of our, of our induction plan, which allows new teachers to work with an experienced teacher from our district.
Correct.
So those things are things that we thought were really important.
Yeah.
But it's all facilitated through.
And it's all on Canvas, and so the mentor teacher, um, meets with that, uh, new teacher once a month. They have to fill out paperwork for that, they have to talk about what they're talking about. Honestly, it's a very rigorous process to go through, and that was one of the reasons why, you know, we were excited that the AIU created this new two-year program that's now required because now we can ensure that they're getting everything that they need in order to be successful down the road. And of course, our teachers are involved in that, and there's a lot of resources that they provide for our teachers so that way they can ensure that they're talking to the new teachers on the, you know, things that need to be addressed, so.
One thing that we learned too, we learned this through experiences. Those, those new teachers also will have an opportunity to interact with new teachers from other districts. So we're always looking for collaborations with other districts and having new teachers talk about how we do it here at EF or how they do it at North Allegheny. Those, 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 uh, new teachers will have those opportunities too. So it's another benefit from the induction plan. Next slide. These are some that I talked to you about, those professional development required by PDE. So these are all, and it's a lot of words on this page, uh, but there are several new ones here that are, have to be a part of this comprehensive plan that we need to provide to our teachers as part of professional development. So while we're still continuing to try to do the innovative things that require a lot of professional development, there are many new requirements here. And we have, uh, a vector solution, which is an online training program that Dr. Sodesky worked with, uh, to have access for our teachers to do some of those online things that you go through modules. A lot of jobs with HR, we can cover some of them this way, some of them are a little bit more complicated. The last one, the structured literacy framework is a, is a monster. It's a big one.
So the beauty of PDE is they don't necessarily give you a cookie cutout of what you need to do. They say, we need to provide this professional development. Okay, well, what does that mean? Like, what does that look like? Is there, is there a required amount of hours you want us to do? Well, I'll tell you what you get. So we're trying to really create ways that we know we have to do all of these, but how can we do it so that our teachers are getting something out of it? So for the structured literacy, not everybody has to go through that program, but, um, that, um, training, but if you have a certain certification, you do. So we're using the AIU to help us with that because they have a training, a one-day training that's specific to that teacher certification. So that makes more sense than just having someone come in and do a training with everybody in the district for, you know, a half a day and check a box. Because what are they really getting out of that? So there's different, um, ways that we're handling each one of those required trainings. Trauma and pain care, we have always used Dr. Teresevich, um, that has come here from UPMC. So we're gonna continue to use her. Um, and then again, we're gonna work with this vector solution to take care of our professional ethics because again, there isn't anything that the state is giving us to use, they're just saying, you have to do this.
I think the one thing with the structure, the structured literacy, the one interesting thing is that if we have an art teacher that has a certification in reading, they still have to go through this training. Even though they're an art teacher, uh, they're cert, so that's the thing.
If you have special ed certifications, you could be a biology teacher, but if you have your special ed cert, even if you're not using it, you still have to go through a training. So, um, it's kind of coming out with a plan. Uh, we developed a plan, so in the next three years for everyone to get the trainings that they need.
And so let's go to the next slide. These are all within the last two or three years, about three or four years, we've gotten new mandated training. So the timeline for, for submission is first September. Uh, for twenty-eight days, we have to have the, the plan posted, which is what we did in our September meeting for review. We're going to hopefully approve that, uh, this, this at the board meeting tonight. And then by October thirty-first, we just have to get a couple of signatures and go on the website and submit it that way. So that will be the end of the process. So this is really the formal process that we went through. But what we got out of it is what you're gonna see on the next slide. So if we go to the next slide. What we want to do is we want to make this concise enough so that people understand where our focus is. And every student, we can post these in classrooms, and we can really make this drive our decision-making and all of our new initiatives. So we always want to look at career, uh, awareness, academic engagement, data-informed decisions, and there's a lot of examples that I could point to here that we're working on, and transformative technology. So those are really our four pillars. And we break them down a little bit further in the next slide, where we give a little bit of a description of what we expect from our students whenever they graduate in each of these four columns. Now, what this allows us to do is this allows us, whenever we are moving in a direction and we're looking at a new initiative, this allows us to go back to our pillars and determine, are we, is what we're going to do, is it aligned with these pillars? So this is something that we feel is really important in driving the district forward, making sure that we stay on track and that we are always working towards these four pillars. Mary Carol, Tori, anything to add?
So each one gives just basically a description of, um, what the focus is. So obviously, we wanted to make academics number one, because that is our job here, is to make sure that every student in the district, you know, is, is having their needs met academically. And then our data-informed decisions, we have AIMS web, we have CDTs, obviously, we do the PSSAs and the Keystones. Uh, but how do we use that data? You know, what are we doing, our P V A S scores that come back? You know, what are we doing with that data whenever it is returned to us and to the classroom teacher? So what we've done, um, for the remainder of this year, I've planned out some time with the folks from the AIU, and we have someone coming in from the TAN that's gonna be working on the P V A S data. So that way, teachers that are, um, essentially targeted teachers that teach the Keystones and the PSSA so that way they understand what the P V A S data means. Um, we have, and Insight is our warehouse where we have all of our data collected. We have someone that's coming in to do trainings. Now, these are things that we have done piecemeal throughout the years, but now it's, the teachers know that that's what we're doing with it. You know, our elementary is now making decisions based on data. So, you know, if they want to refer a student to, a child to, you know, special education services, well, why do you want to do that? And what have you done with that child prior to just putting a referral packet together? If a parent wants to have a meeting with the, um, you know, with the building principal and the homeroom teacher, now they have data that they can actually show, uh, that parent rather than just P S S A data or NWA data. You know, we have other data sources now that we can look at to give a broader picture of the student. And obviously, the technology, I mean, we have all, we're just trailblazers with technology, there's no doubt about it. I have gone all over the country and Ardain is everywhere. I mean, we have really set the stage for what a school district can look like and what it can do with technology, and we do not want to lose momentum with that. Um, and then career awareness, that definitely has been, um, you know, it's always part of our three-three-nine plan with our school counselors, but now we're really making a focus with what we're doing with our, um, uh, with our world of work at the elementary and middle school level. And because, I mean, ultimately, students need to leave, you know, high school. They need to either go on to some additional education or maybe they just get a job. And we need to make sure that they're prepared to get a job. Uh, so, and then just having them know about themselves and where their strengths are. I mean, I can personally speak for myself, you know, I think I met my school counselor one time in four years I was in high school, you know? And you just kind of picked your own thing based on what you liked. You know, what we're doing now and the focus that we're, you know, creating in the classrooms is so that kids know what their strengths are and they kind of know the things that, uh, their interests, uh, are. And, you know, we're, you know, kind of talking about, you know, how can we create pathways at the high school level, you know, once they get there, based on some of the things that they have done at the elementary and the middle school level. So that way, they're on a track to either get a certification before they leave high school or they're taking the necessary courses that they need so when they go to a secondary education, it's the right classes and it's just not whatever. Um, so these are just, and this all came out of conversations that we had with the teachers and, you know, the parents that came and then just, you know, the things that we're doing here and talking collectively about, you know, that's how we came up with this.
I think the beauty of all of this is that it's all together, it's not in silos. So even though we're doing data-informed decisions and transformative technology, they all interplay together, which I think is really important as we're making decisions and moving forward.
As much as I talk about what it bearing was to put this thing together, it was incredible exercise. Uh, we learned a lot about the district. I think we really have a great guiding light now as we look at these and make decisions based on those. Uh, and ultimately, uh, you know, we kept one thing in mind that's most important. You know, we thought about our students and how we can make a better environment for our students, uh, educationally and all, looking at all those things, uh, data, transformative technology, and also career awareness. We'll do a better job, all those things, and this should help guide us for the next three years. Uh, I want to thank, uh, so many people that helped contribute. We had, I think, our first meeting, we probably had forty people at our first meeting, the teachers and administrators. Uh, people came at the end of the year over the summer. Uh, we had meetings with, uh, community members who came in and gave up their time. We fed them some pizzas, I think that helped a little bit, we fed the teachers as well. But, uh, they came in and gave up a lot of their time. There's been a lot of phone calls between billing level administrators about feedback and so forth. Uh, but really, ultimately, uh, my team at the district office is the one who kind of, really kind of rounded up all this information. So I really have to give a huge thank you to my district administration team. Dr. Sodesky with some of the student services, Mr. Gettler with student, special education. Uh, but these two ladies in front of me, Mrs. LoJack and Dr. Perry, uh, really did all the heavy lifting and all the hard work. So I really have to just commend them for the work that they did for this district and putting together this great plan. So thank you too personally, and thank everybody, so I appreciate it. Any questions on this? Last two things, we've had a mission statement. The one thing when you do the mission statement is it has to be brief. Uh, ours was about five hundred words, and it didn't have, and it didn't have, it only had one period, so it was too long. Uh, what we'd like to do is have something that people can kind of grab onto and think about, even if it's only these last, you know, forget about the Elizabeth Forward, empower students through technology, academic career, awareness for a rapidly evolving world. So I think that's something we can all remember, we can post in classrooms, and kids can remember this. We also have to talk about a vision, where we're headed, and this one's a little bit longer, but I think, uh, some key words that you're gonna see here are rigorous and engaging, uh, instruction, innovative technology, comprehensive career awareness, and really making sure these kids are prepared academically, socially, and also emotionally for this very, very, uh, changing world that we're dealing with. So, uh, these are what's gonna guide us again, along with those two. Anything to add? Mary Carol, Tori? Any questions?
Whole child.
Huh?
I mean, we're thinking of the whole child. And what can keep them successful, uh, make them successful when they leave high school.
Anything else? Anybody? Thank you, everybody, thank you for your support, I appreciate it. I have just one last thing on their super tax report, and I apologize for rounding it a little over here. But, uh, I had the opportunity to travel to Washington DC as part of the League of Innovative Schools, and, uh, part of that trip was called League on the Hill, where members of the League of Innovative Schools had opportunities to talk to US Congress men and women, and also senators. I had an opportunity to sit in, uh, some Representative Lee's office, she's, uh, for our district, and talk to her about some of the needs in education. I talked and advocated for free lunch, national free lunch. Our state supports us right now, we're looking for a national free lunch, if there's something we can get on that. I also talked them about, uh, the Essers Cliff, as we like to call it in education, this funding that, uh, runs until 2024 that's gonna end, that was a part of, uh, uh, there's federal funds due to, uh, some of the things related to COVID. Once those funds go away, are there any solutions from the federal government that might be able to support us? So I'm advocating for those things with those folks. Uh, hopefully, they heard us and, uh, we have some contacts that will reach out and follow up. So that's all I have for super tax report. Thanks, everybody.
Mr. Conick, Dr. Perry, thank you. Uh, next up, public comment. Scott Taylor.
Good evening, everybody, Scott Taylor, uh, through a four Mohawk Drive. Um, some of you, most of you actually do know me. I run a little nonprofit here in Elizabeth Township called Protect Elizabeth Township. Uh, our short and sweet mission statement is we advocate for the rights of citizens in the environment in this municipality. You don't see me a lot here because this meeting actually conflicts with the planning commission. Uh, I spend most of my time over at the Elizabeth Township Municipality and deal, uh, working with them. I'll buttonhead to where we want to call it, but we try to work together for the betterment of the community. Uh, the reason I'm here, uh, you guys are all aware of the Olympus well site that is located behind the high school. Elizabeth Township Commissioners gave permission for that well site to be built with a long list of conditions. One of those conditions is noise pollution. And they're only allowed to put out a certain level of noise. And everything we found, they started drilling last week, had been drilling for a week. Uh, they rushed this job in comparison to the other two jobs, um, arguably because they have a pending date in front of a judge here at the end of this month. So we're assuming they rushed this job to get it done and get a drill into the ground to hope to keep the active site. We have found since they started drilling that they are exceeding their noise limits using handheld meters, which are not admissible in court and causing me a little bit of grief for getting the township to actually do something. So I approached the noise and vibration expert, they testified in the public hearings for us. He is, uh, scrambling to come out, he's gonna come out next week and start placing noise monitors. I have several spots located around the well site for him to put them on. One of the places we want to zero in on is what we call Ground Zero, the high school, where we have the bone contention over the setback distance to the high school, protecting the kids, protecting the staff at that school. I assume that that is your priority as well. So I am asking for permission to locate a sound monitor on the roof of the high school on the end of that wing closest to the well site. The only thing I'm mo, asking for is access to the roof to place a monitor, and if it's available on the roof, a 110 outlet that I can run extension cord to, but that is not necessary. Hope you guys consider, maybe get a little bit of discussion. Mr. Conick, I'll leave my contact information with you at the end if you don't discuss it. But I would like to have an idea what you guys are thinking so I can line everything up and equipment appropriate for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, next up, John Schubert.
Would it be proper to let Dr. Stigl's students do what they need to do in case they have something else? Okay. All right. All right, yep, my questions are on our construction project, how we're going about it. I'm not against any improvements, and I agree with Dr. Perry, education should be our number one priority. But, um, the way we're going about this, uh, the question I have for our solicitor is, did we violate the Sunshine Act by not having the, um, McLean Architects as part of the agenda at last month's meeting when they? as part of the agenda at last month's meeting when they made their presentation?
No, because it's on this month's agenda and is subject to public comment, which is what we're doing right now.
So, we had, and we haven't got answers to questions that have been asked, asked the whole time through this project. The whole loop that is going to be put around the whole high school and the parking that's going to be added to the back of the high school. Mr., I don't know if it was McLean or whoever the architect was here, said that that was for access to the future academic wing. Is the amenities that are athletic fields going to be in the area of that parking lot that's going to be in the back of the?
Well, I think you're getting slightly, slightly ahead. It's an understatement, slightly ahead, because the action item tonight is regarding preparing plans. It's not approving plans, which is a whole separate matter, which would be subject to discussion as you just pointed out. This is just to prepare, you know, his plans and begin that process. So we're at the very nascent stage of this whole process. So where, you know, fields and all the rest of it is, you know, we really don't have pen to paper. There are, you know, themes, but they are not, you know, it's by no means anywhere near final because that process has to be taken, and that's why this item is on the agenda tonight.
So, we're, we're only approving for him to go further with plans?
Correct.
And we're going to have a public forum for the public to be informed of our plans when they're finalized?
We will continue to have meetings, public meetings where we do, we continue with presentations. We'll continue to put plans on the website as we have done before. That information is available to folks, so. And these things all happen at public meetings, anybody's welcome to come. They're always, they're always open to the public.
I under-
Anything else, Mr. Strong?
Yeah, I, I'm just-
Kind of wise, I don't want to get killed.
No, no, I-
No, I don't want to, I just don't want to, I don't want to be called in for a time.
I'm just, I'm just going by, the first time with the first presentation that he made, his name was in the agenda. When we come up with the second presentation that people could have been here for, the only way you knew it was going to be here is if you were at a previous meeting. You had no idea, nothing was placed on a website?
We encourage people to come to our public meetings, and I think even some of our members over here said, we appreciate the input. So we always invite people to our public meetings, so.
Okay.
And we've been, we've been heavy into this construction project. I mean, it's something that we're going to be doing. I will tell now, we are doing something with construction every month. I think that's fair to say. So, so if anybody wants information on construction or these plans, we're going to be doing it every month. So, so if you need information, you're welcome to call the district, send email. I'd be more than happy to, to work with you on that. But just to let you, again, come to public meetings.
Okay, let's move on, thank you, Mr. Strong. Next up, Steel Center Special Reports, Steel Center Southeast, there's-
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. PSBA, Mr. Henry.
There is a report.
Thank you. She has the, Mr. Henry.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Those before it's in. Favorite part. We lost one.
We have a soccer game at seven thirty.
Oh.
I didn't want to rush in her car.
Mr. Conick was too long, I apologize.
So this is our October school board presentation. So the Alumni Association, the yearly alumni game was held on September twenty-second, where each of the alumni, alumnis were recognized for their hard work and dedication after high school. During the day, senior members of National Honor Society took each member on an updated tour of the building and led them to classes to speak about their, their post Elizabeth Forward accomplishments. Inductees were recognized at the football game Friday evening and at a banquet on Saturday. Two educators, one young alumni, and five other alumni were recognized after the game. Homecoming, homecoming was held on September twenty-ninth. The football team made a comeback to win in the fourth quarter down South Maryland, thirty-one to twenty-four. The homecoming king and queen were announced during halftime. Homecoming king was awarded to Alec Metcalf and queen was awarded to Carly Sokka. An informal dance was held in the gymnasium following the game until eleven PM, where there was a DJ, snacks, and pizza.
A new PBIS street port circulated around the building, providing small treats to the students. We appreciate all the teachers that, all the teachers do to support our students. Thanks to Mrs. Novak and the students for helping out.
October is Principal Appreciation Month, and to kick off the month, SGA officers purchased and delivered hoodie bags for each of the high school principals as a thank you for what they do for our school.
On December twenty-sixth, we held the Camp of Champions at our high school. The event was held to make a positive impact on the youth with disabilities and to show them some football skills as well as the importance of exercise and healthy lifestyles. Many other schools came to this event, including schools like Baldwin and South Allegheny, along with some representatives of the Steelers Youth Football Clinic and, of course, the Steelers mascot.
Smiling for Sam. After the recent tragic passing of the local Sarah Catholic cheerleader, Elizabeth Forward has helped provide aid to the student's family. The sophomore class created bracelets reading, "Smiling for Sam," and sold them during school lunches and the homecoming game Friday, September twenty-ninth. The student-run-ish company sold shirts and crewnecks sporting the same phrase and both collectively donated over one thousand dollars to Sam's family. The EF High School cheerleaders also paid tribute to her by wearing maroon bows at the football game against Dom. Finally, the student section was filled with maroon and gold for Sarah Catholic, and there was a moment of silence for the victim and her community. The musical, the twenty-twenty-four spring musical is Big Fish. The cast is led by seniors Tyler Kinte Brody and Sidney Mannion and sophomore Oliver Moore with an enormous supporting cast and ensemble. At, at the first day, at the first all-day rehearsal this past Saturday, the cast's dedication was shown when stilts were immediately bought and brought in for Dom Sager to practice being Carl the Giant.
SGA Pen Pal letters, on October ninth, SGA members set their second meeting of the year off with a bang. Students got to choose which elementary school in the Elizabeth School District they wanted to write a pen pal to. Our members were hard at work writing to their fourth graders. And after the success of the activity in previous years, we are positive it will have an even better turnout. There are ninety high school students in the program now with a waiting list of students at the ready. If any more fourth graders move into the district.
On the PBIS Student Summit, and the Brave Bunch students went to Allegheny Intermediate Unit, AIU, at the waterfront to discuss PDIS. There they bounced ideas off other school Brave Bunch organizations and figured out ways to further better their school while also providing examples of the great things they've accomplished with their own respective schools.
For girls golf, EF High School sophomore Maya Morgan had won first place in the girls' three-A Whipple Championship. She is the first ever golfer, male or female, to win this Whipple title. And she continued her golf season and competed up at Penn State this past week where she did place seven.
So for cross countries, nine schools in Western Pennsylvania congregated in South Mills, South Hills, Mingo Park Wednesday, October fourth. The top three in the conference were taken out by Elizabeth Forward boys, with Patrick Burgos coming in first, becoming the all-conference champion, followed by Thomas Fine and Hunter Thomas. The F girls took third place overall in the conference, with Lily Ash coming in seventh and Brooke Yurkovich, Yurkovic in eighth. So the freshman refresher, members of SGA hosted the freshman class to expand their horizons within the school. Club members came to speak to the students to teach them about what their clubs did and all the fun activities and skills they can learn if they join them. The SGA members then took surveys based on the freshmen's answers and helped spread awareness of the clubs and opportunities within the high school.
Brave Students of the Month, here are your PBIS brave students for September. For left to right, we have Willie Douglas, Abigail Gendelsberger, Luke Cauldrin, and Mark Novak. We want to congratulate them on setting a positive example in high school. Steel Center Students of the Month, congrats to the Steel Center Students of the Month, Maddie Chisco, Ethan Boyle, and Dylan Thomas. Steel Center is the important part to the high school programs where students learn skills to make them job-ready when they graduate.
And then for National Merit Scholarship, pictured here is Mr. Call with his student Willie Douglas. Willie received the prestigious Commended Student designation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Congrats to her on all of her academic achievements. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth Forward student.
Okay, next up, Secretary Report, motion please for six point one and six point two.
Motion, second, Mr. Seaver, second, Mr. Conick. All is in favor?
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Mr. Conick, Secretary Report.
Robert Seaver, first, eight point three, median balance of two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Total cap is equal to seventeen million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents. We have total disbursements of seven million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six thousand, ninety-four cents. An ending balance for the general fund of twelve million, three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Mr. Conick, thank you. Motion, please, to accept the Attorney Report, seven point one.
Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Henry? Second, Ms. Wyckoff. All is in favor?
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Next up, Finance and Technology, motion, please, for eight point one through eight point six.
Motion, second.
Mr. Seaver, second, Mr. Henry. All is in favor?
Aye.
Again?
Aye.
Motion passed. Education and Grants, nine point one, can I motion please, nine point one through nine point fourteen?
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Conick, second, Ms. Wyckoff. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Next up, Facilities and Transportation, can I motion please, ten point one through ten point four?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Henry? Second, Mr. Conick. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we're going to pause here. I have a statement to read on the facilities transportation and where we are over the past six months. Okay, this is on behalf of the board of school directors, Elizabeth Forward. Over the past six months, the district has been working with its property insurer and seeking recovery for covered items of damage in connection with the February twelfth, twenty-twenty-three fire loss. As with any situation of this magnitude, the claim process is complicated, ongoing, and will take time. To date, preliminary, preliminary estimates prepared with respect to the fire loss has identified at least twenty-seven million in costs associated with the remediation, repair, and/or replacement of damaged items in connection with the fire, as well as costs associated with certain light improvements. The construction process surrounding the repair of the damage caused by the fire presents an opportune time for the district to undertake capital improvements to high school building assets that have been identified in recent years as necessary. By undertaking such work at this time while working to rebuild what has been lost or damaged due to the fire is a cost-effective approach to completing these necessary capital improvements that are designed to maintain already existing assets. Our long-term goal for our high school is to create a dynamic, self-contained, safe, and modernized space that all of our students will benefit from. Creating new spaces for our kids to perform at the highest level, whether it's in the classroom, on a court, or a performance stage, is something we must do as a community. For too long, we have maintained aging buildings while their districts of comparable size have improved existing facilities for our completely created new ones. The approval of Phase One by this board is a first step in ensuring that our high school is a better environment to educate and enrich the lives of every Elizabeth Forward student. We are committed to matching buildings to meet the standards that we have set forth for academic excellence. By doing so, we will even better educate our children and prepare them for their futures. Mr. Conick would like to say something also?
I just want to, you know, this is a big day. I think that, you know, we've been through so much and, 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 you know, I look at the, the four students in the back and, and as I think about what we've been through as adults, what you have been through as students in the high school between COVID and the fire. You know, what, it's what motivates us to keep moving and making sure that even though you may not have the direct benefits of this stuff, that you'll know that things are changing because of, of you and your fellow students. I also have to recognize that this is eight months and six days after the fire. And for the things to have happened, if you're familiar with some of the processes involved with, with dealing with a fire, which not many folks are, they're, they're complicated, more complicated than even COVID as we went through that time period. And, and we thought that that was the most complicated thing in the world, but we also recognize that we had fellow school districts to talk to. We were in this alone, this district, this school board, this community, to go through something that hasn't happened to very many school districts even in the country. And I just want to take a minute to kind of really, you know, go from those dark days to start to think about the excitement of the future of this district. And I think, you know, as I start to look at what we can give to our students and we're talking about the musical, which I didn't steal anybody's thunder, which I usually do, I was very careful. I didn't talk about Camp of Champions because I knew you guys would, and also the musical. Just one of the examples of us giving our kids opportunities to be in a space, you know, that's really aligned with the incredible things that they do. And for us to have an opportunity to do that, as bad as this fire was, for us to be on the precipice of moving forward with improving our facilities for our kids is something that I'm very excited about. I know that Dr. Perry, my entire administrative team is super excited about. And, you know, I just want to take some time to, to, to stop and thank everybody. This school board especially, it was challenging. This is some of the most challenging times that we have ever gone through. And personally, I can say that for myself as a superintendent at the time, I'd had five weeks' experience. It was a challenging time. And to get to this point where we're going to engage an architect to come up with plans to better our high school, it's just really, you know, along with our comprehensive plan that's going to drive us, I feel like, you know, these last eight months of being new to the superintendency, just that really, really just kind of things are starting to fall in place and I just can't tell you how excited I am. And thank everybody who's been a part of that for, for support and, and helping to kind of stay focused on the kids. I think that's my, let's, let's keep that the focus. Those four guys here, four kids in the back, our three students up here, it's why we do what we do, it's what's going to drive us. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Conick. Okay, let's move on, Personnel, can I motion, please, for eleven point one?
Motion.
Mr. Henry?
Thanks.
Second, Mr. Seaver. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again? Personnel, can I motion, please, twelve point one through twelve point four?
Motion.
Mr. Henry?
Second.
Second, Mr. Conick. All is in favor?
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Personnel, thirteen point one, can I motion, please?
Motion.
Mr. Henry?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henry. All is in favor?
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Personnel, can I motion, please, fourteen point one through fourteen point three?
Motion.
Mr. Seaver. Second, Mr. Henry. All is in favor?
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Athletics and Student Activities, can I motion, please, fifteen point one through fifteen point two?
Motion, second.
Mr. Henry, I'm sorry, second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Motion passed. Jeremy, can I motion?
Mr. Sharp, for the beginning, I lost track when we were down there, but nine point two, I didn't know that it was.
Okay, sixteen, can I motion, please, for sixteen point one?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Henry, second, please?
Second.
Second, second.
Mr. Conick, all is in favor?
Aye.
Again? Motion passed. Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mary.